Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the City Council's special meeting and work session of Tuesday, February 20. I'll call the meeting to order and ask for approval of the agenda.
To move second.
Favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. Okay, great. Thanks. Well, the first item on our agenda is a resolution. And it is Resolution 2404 for the purpose of amending the City Council Rules of Procedure dated May 2, 2023. Bruce?
I'm sorry, I was. The Council desired to review their standards for public comment in the rules of procedures. Council reviewed the rules of procedure and made revisions. And the recommendation is that staff recommends Council adopt Resolution 2404 for the purpose of amending the City Council Rules of Procedure dated May 2, 2023.
Okay, if you have any discussion on this?
Just go into effect immediately? Good.
Well, after we've gone on it.
I moved to adopt Resolution 2404 for the purpose of amending the City Council Rules of Procedure dated May 2, 2023.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to make sure everybody is aware of why I'm doing this. I don't think it's any secret, but.
Yes.
Can you? Can you explain a little bit what it is?
Sure. Unfortunately, we had two meetings that were interrupted by a term I wasn't aware of called Zoom bombing. And so we are changing our procedures for public comment so that we don't have that happen again. I am very sorry that it did happen, something that was obviously out of all of our control. And so this new procedure is hopefully will prevent that from happening again.
What is the procedure?
That we could, that we have, it's beautiful stuff.
I just wanted to read.
Yeah, I want to express. Do you, would you, the audience like me to, okay, okay, so what we're adding to it is public comment during City Council meeting is not an absolute right. Rather, the City Council permits public comment only for the limited purposes of hearing from the public about matters directly related to the business of the city that is within the council's jurisdiction. The public comment period is a limited public forum and comments are therefore appropriately limited to matters of concern, official action or deliberation which are or may come before City Council. The City Council is not creating an opportunity for and will not accept public comment on matters that fall outside the scope of the council's jurisdiction, such as employment issues related to employees and officers who are not appointed or supervised by council. During public hearings, all public comment must relate to the specific matter under discussion. All public comments must be addressed to the City Council as a body. Public comment must not unduly interfere with the City Council's ability to conduct business or otherwise disrupt City Council meetings. Comments that substantially interrupt, delay, or disturb the peace and good order of the proceedings of the City Council are not permitted. Examples of such types of comments include shouting, use of profanity or vulgarity, or speaking outside of allotted time. In addition, public comment may not be used for belligerent or abusive behavior, including truth threats, finding words or incitements to emanate lawless action. Abusive and harassing comments that could lead to the creation of a hostile work environment for city employees required to attend City Council meetings likewise unduly interfere with the council's ability to conduct its business and are therefore prohibited. The City Council requests that all public comment is provided in a manner that is respectful to those in attendance at the meeting.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, any other further discussion? Okay, could we have a call, please? Sherrod?
Yes, Councilor Ogobee.
Yes.
Council President McCarthy.
Yes.
Councilor Hayes.
Yes.
And Councilor Her.
Yes.
Fair enough.
Yes. Okay, so Resolution 2404 goes into effect immediately. So next on agenda, we have public comment under our new resolution. And so I'd like to remind everyone that we have signed in respectful public comment and we try to keep it under three minutes. So Jan, you'll be our first Resolution 2404.
Okay, I'm Jan Seibert-Wormand, P O Box 778. I just had a few comments on a few different items, just very brief. The first one is that I'm very much looking forward to having a public hearing where we can speak to the landscape design at Nacous. I think tonight you're going to discuss it among yourselves, but I would love to also have a possibility in the near future of having a hearing where the citizens can also weigh in and give suggestions. And then the second thing is that I do support the meeting of an ad hoc group that was mentioned in Paul Juergens and Patrick Knofield's email with, and that they would be meeting with the City Council regarding the Cannon Beach Elementary Rejuvenation Project. I would just like to encourage us as a community to come together to find where we can agree, which is, I think, we can really agree on most of it, and then we can move forward. And you know I support it, so if you know that by now. So then the third part I would like to mention is about the bond. I was surprised when we heard last meeting, I believe it was, about the bond measure where the, excuse me, the bond issue, I think, where the, the committee, the advisory committee had recommended that there be a nonprofit group to coordinate the whole situation at this school at Nacous. And then last month of the meeting, we've heard that it would now be a city-run facility due to, as I understand it, a tax break if the city runs it. So I'm not quite clear, as you can tell, how this actually would work. So I would ask respectfully that we could have a, an agenda item as soon as possible to help myself, as well as others that care about this issue, to understand this in more detail because I was at the meeting when the advisory committee decided that, you know, they wanted the nonprofit, and now it's suddenly changed. So if we could just have some way to understand it better and maybe even weigh in on that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Is there anyone on Zoom if you would raise your hand?
I think, I think Betty is.
Oh, I'm sorry, Betty?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought you were just saying hi to me.
Betty Guerin, Box 137, Cannon Beach. Well, being on the ad hoc committee and going through and going through most of the meetings that have happened about the cruise site, I just want you to know that I'm totally in support of us moving forward as quickly as possible. I think we've listened to numerous people, and the longer we wait, the more this is going to cost us. And I think the way we have it right now is amazing. So that's my input.
Thank you, Betty. Okay, anyone else in the audience? Okay, is there anyone on Zoom if you could raise your hand? If you'd like to speak? Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we're going to close the special meeting and open the work session. And the first discussion item is the landscape repeal. And Bruce, would you like to introduce that?
Yes, thank you, ma'am. At the January 2, 2024 meeting, the Council adopted findings of fact and conclusions of law, APP 23-07. The findings included the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall submit a revised landscaping plan that includes a continuous path connecting the welcoming courtyard, the heritage garden, and the story circle in an obvious loop along the riverbank, celebrating the overall site heritage. The council shall approve these modifications after a public hearing coupled with notice to the owners within 100 feet of subject property prior to building permit issuance. Second element is the applicant shall submit a revised landscaping plan showing a simplification of the garden plantings to reflect more natural arrangement. The council acknowledges that this may require locating, relocating the Thunderbird to allow for the trails to loop to the creek and on to the story circle area. The council shall approve these modifications after a public hearing coupled with notice to owners within 100 feet of the subject property prior to the permit issuance. And the landscaping, revised landscaping package is included in your materials for tonight's meeting. Recommendation is consensus to move forward with a public hearing on March 12 regarding the landscaping plan.
Okay.
And now we can show their plan if you would like.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and Council. It's always humbling to be here presenting to you. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. I also have pulled up, so this is the new plan that's in your packets for tonight. We can talk back and forth between that plan and this plan, which is the plan that you last saw, which was the plan that was previously presented to DRB and then to City Council as part of that repeal. So as Bruce mentioned, as the condition of approval of that repeal of the DRB decision, our task was to come forth with a revised landscape design that simplified the landscape overall and that provided a looped trail from the southeast entry plaza up to the north to the existing nature trail and then around to the west side of the site and back to point of origin at the southeast plaza. So what you have in your packets tonight is a collaboration with Joyce Jackson, our landscape architect, who's on Zoom tonight, and Seda and the Brimic team and the tribe. And what we've done, we've, we've done graphics a little differently for tonight to better convey a sense of what we believe this site will feel like as opposed to just showing you AutoCAD files with circles for plants. So we do have the latter as the sheet. And if you would like Joyce to present the individual landscape species and talk about that sort of methodology, she's, I think, can do that. I'll walk you through the layout here, starting at the southeast entry plaza. Hardly remains unchanged. We did, after walking the site several times since our last meeting, this existing cedar tree that's growing up against the building, a tree that size that close to the building, you could expect to see fracturing of the foundation in places. It's actually surviving against that building within a few feet of it very well. And the building structure seems to be doing just fine. So we would like to maintain that tree. It is one of the very few existing elements on site to help break up the mass of that structure. So we, we really don't want to take that away. Southeast entry plaza, again, is planted with native plantings, but also non-native plantings. There is a threshold here. We, we don't know what this threshold will be exactly right now. We are showing it to be a couple of poles with a overhead, maybe a tribute to the Thunderbird. We no longer have a Thunderbird garden, but that's, Thunderbird is still a very important thing to, on this site at this time. So we're thinking that this would, this threshold would be a pole or a Tory-style gate, if you will, that pays tribute to that Thunderbird. That threshold is obviously, looking at this image also from the hardscape of the southeast entry plaza, entering into our mulched or gravelled path, and we can talk about those options. And then everything beyond that point is native, either these plants exist onsite or close to the site. The majority of these trees here that have like symbols, these are shore pine. And I can pull up images of shore pine if anyone needs that, but these are common on the Pacific Northwest coast. I really pushed for these and they had a lot of support with Joyce Jackson and the tribe as well. What I really like about this particular plant, aside from just being very sculptural and incredibly beautiful, is that it hits that right scale between human scale and this fairly massive existing structure on site. So we need that sort of step up in scale to kind of bring the whole feeling down. So we've created several clusters of these to get a feel for what that would feel like when these trees are mature, just a walk down gower here towards the beach. They're used as street trees in that example. But you can get a good sense of what that would feel like. And those trees are probably 20 plus years old, but that's the scale at which we really need to think about this. Various other berries, ground covers, bushes along here. This really is the, the bulk of complexity and the entire landscape design is still here on the east side of the gym. We still, you know, given the, the nature of the funding mechanism for this project, we're trying to create opportunities for that interpretive experience. So this would be an area where you would expect to see signage identifying plants and interpretive signage, talking about the Thunderbird and about the way of life of the Clats of Nahalem. As we move north a little bit, I guess there's one more thing here. There's a little offshoot spur trail to the left. So we're trying to keep this hierarchy of trails, the main one, of course, looping around the entire site. But at a couple of key areas, creating those little spur trails again for that interpretive experience and a moment of pause. So along these trails, we would expect to have a place to sit down, a bench, where people can sit and gather their thoughts after reading signage, maybe take in the flora and fauna. Retreating, we used to have along this edge here between Fur Street and the East Garden, there was a long retaining wall just made out of basalt. We're proposing to, to simplify that with more of a meadow fill. So what you're seeing in this light green, yellowish area on both sides of this trail is a, a non-manicured native grass. The manicured grass of Nacous Park would of course remain unchanged. We would overseed it, make sure it's healthy before leaving construction activities at site. We still have our trail leading down from Fur Street Bridge. We are still proposing to do basalt in that area to help with the grade change. It could be, once we have a direction on approval of this plan or some version of it, we'll get Civil back on board to design this path so that we can ensure that it's still very maneuverable for people with mobility issues. I will point out onsite tonight, I, I started electrically parked and looked back towards the site and there was an elderly person out there using a cane and we're able to maneuver the trail as it is just fine out towards the edge of the estuary on this west end of the site. And then I caught back up with her when I came over to park at the school and the existing grade right there, she struggled with. So it was good for me to see that firsthand. So I've got a reference for what I would consider intolerable for people with mobility issues. So the goal would be to flatten that out a little bit. Along this estuary, again, maintaining the existing plantings, getting rid of non-native invasive species, mainly the Himalayan blackberry. Joyce does have a few additional trees in here, alder, and we'll have to look at the plan to see what else she has in here. Let her speak to it. But for the most part, it's restoring that riparian planting area. There is an existing bench located, it's actually just south of this existing spruce stand. We would propose moving that over. It currently faces towards the park, which is great. We would propose adding a few more benches on the other side of the path that look out over the estuary for people who are wildlife watching or just taking that moment of pause, looking at the estuary. As we move around here, this did change a little bit. And so I'm going to revert back to our previous plan real quick. If I could have you sort of focused on the story circle for a second. So here is where our previous path failed to loop around. We also had along this main spur down here, the bath, the higher, our hierarchy of path entered directly into that story circle. So we had a couple of things to resolve here. One was to loop the trail, but also we felt it was important, especially in losing that Thunderbird garden and the interpretive value and the moment of pause, everything that that offered. We wanted to make the story circle be a more intimate space than what was shown here. So going back to our current plan, we've taken that trail, the main trail, and looped it around the story circle instead of going through it. Now we have multiple little spurs that enter the story circle, becomes a, a destination and not a place that your main trail just kind of crosses through. You're, you're there to enjoy that space. The other thing we did is we moved the open-sided pavilion a little bit closer to the story circle and reduced it in size just a tad. That allowed us to make that connection behind the open-sided pavilion. The other thing that allows us to do is to create a little bit of space here on the backside of that pavilion to introduce our heritage play area. And if you recall, that heritage play area used to be about where my cursor is right now. Because that heritage play area is there, we're now proposing that this pavilion would be open-sided at least on two sides instead of just the side facing out toward the story circle. That way, if you're a parent and you're coming here to enjoy an event going on in the story circle, you can also have an eye on your kids behind you playing there at the heritage play area. And the last couple of things I want to show you here, we are showing, the path is kind of gray along here before it turns into the brown mulched, mulched path, more like what we have now. Again, we can talk about whether the path is gravel to assist with mobility for the entire path or just a portion of the path. But at the very least, what we're hoping to see is that from the north courtyard to the story circle, to the open-sided pavilion and around the backside of that pavilion to a lookout out by the welcoming man, that we would make that not just more accessible, but ADA accessible. We want to make sure that people who have serious mobility issues do have access as far at least as the welcome in. And the way we loop that path back around to point of origin is then to take it on to the pavement of the north courtyard. There's multiple things we can do here to address this connection. This was one of many, but what we're proposing here is taking that pattern of paver, of pavers, excuse me, that is a classic, Clats of Nahalem weave pattern, taking that and rotating it 90 degrees and continuing that path along there so that it demarks that north edge of the pavement, pavement as part of that path. And then from there, you're, you're back to your point of origin. The rest of these diagrams are, are blowups of some of these areas. Here is, of course, the path from the First Street Bridge down where we're going to work to flatten this out a bit. We are proposing to relocate both of the existing basalt stones that have the bronze plaques with history of the site. One of them is located, this one's a little bit closer up towards this ramped area. We would move that to this point of convergence of these three portions of the path. So now, again, this is not something that you just sort of find yourself upon in the park, but it becomes a very intentional point meant to, to see high traffic. Similar to that, over on this other side, we would be proposing right now, the existing basalt stone is this little square box you see here. We would propose to just take that and move it a few feet over. So for folks that are walking the loop and not going out to the estuary from there, that they also have visual access to that signage. I think beyond that, I'm just available to answer any questions you have. And if, again, if you'd like to hear more about the species that are proposed for the site, Joyce is online and can speak to.
Question?
Yeah, Dustin? What's your understanding? The current trail that is closest to the, the Cola Creek, of course, is not ADA accessible. And the reason when it was put in, I was told was that we, we couldn't because of its proximity to the creek.
There, I can understand that concern. It's a pretty, it's pretty quick to drop off on the north edge of that. So we actually, for a large portion of this path, have it moved away slightly in towards the, the the park, but I don't see that being the reason to not make that ADA accessible.
I don't either, but my point, if I can make it a little bit clearer, was that we weren't allowed to pave it because of its proximity, not through safety, but through like, I'm not sure which regulating body.
And that might have something more to do with development within a floodplain or proximity to.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
I'm sorry if I'm not speaking.
Oh, no, that.
Politically about that.
And that's, there's a difference between ADA accessibility and just general accessibility to try to, we can make this place very accessible and not hit that ADA accessibility mark where we're having to follow all those federal guidelines. And what you're talking about is, is either state or local. And it's true, within a certain distance of that floodplain line or wetland buffer area that we would not be able to do any sort of, you know, development that would include hardscaping.
Okay.
I think on the south edge where we're talking about, there shouldn't be too much of a problem here, especially at least getting up to the story circle and the, the covered pavilion. But you're right, we would need to take a closer look as we get up towards the welcome in.
Well, it's confusing to me because that, that trail, as it, as it continues on up the creek, becomes asphalt at some point. That's, it couldn't be any closer to the creek.
Right.
I'm a bit confused as to, to what the rules actually are.
And sometimes it's less about what the rules are and what people can do behind, behind this. Here, we've got a, a project that's owned by, the, the site is owned by the city and you're obviously obligated to, to follow the, the word of, you know, the, the law and then the codes that you have in front of you. And I think that is going to preclude you from being able to pave that path. Now, can we gravel that path within that floodplain area or wetland buffer area? You should be able to do that. It's imperious.
Okay.
Previous.
You're planning to have it be.
You're planning to have it be pervious surface?
I'm sorry.
You're planning on it being pervious surface all along the, all along the so.
Even where we're proposing ADA accessibility, we can you have to maintain it to be ADA accessible. Accessible and permeable. And that's what we have proposed. We're currently not proposing any paved flatwork along the trail itself.
Dustin, what is the the north where they keep going over, 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 where the that little oval area is on the on the north? Yeah, that, what is that?
So this is an area where in in collaborating with the tribe, and this goes back to some pretty early renditions of the landscape plan. It was always important to have a portion of that estuary area that was refurbished, not from a grading standpoint, but from a planting standpoint. Here are the plants that would have been here. You know, before the school was there. And to have, you know, interpretive signage down there identifying those plants and their uses to the classical ancestors.
So those would be the native plants that were there prior to the school development? Okay.
Also seems like an opportunity to talk about watershed interpretive where it gets you right down there. I really like the flow of this. It flows well from however you're approaching it. You know, the story circle makes a great starting point and then it leads you through nicely. I like the way that basalt marker greets both people coming from the story circle and from across First Street Bridge. So that kind of serves as a nice introduction. I do like the spur trails and the way it loops all the way around. It just feels like it's got good flow to it. On the north and northwest of the story circle, that's pretty much the beach access as it exists with the welcoming man. How about the access more to the south where it it goes to the west there and then ends in your illustration?
Sorry, right here. So there's a little bit of an error that I'm seeing here. That's not intended to be gravled over. That would just, we're proposing that would be maintained as as it is now. So just a mulched path.
But that the existing trail that kind of goes through some of the woodland area, is that still off the screen from what we're looking at here?
It is still off the screen. Yeah, connecting back up to the gate down just south of the food bank there. That would all be maintained as as we we could. Now, there's a property lying here, but that, you know, my understanding is the city owns that property as well to the west. So if we want to integrate that as part of our interpretive experience, that would be easily accommodated.
It does seem like a bit of an opportunity. I mean, there's some really nice specimen evergreen huckleberry in there and the city has thinned out some of the dead stuff. So what's there is going to more thrive, some of the shore pine and some of the the Sitka spruce that are in there.
It looks really nice right now.
Yes.
And there's something to be said for just leaving it. And not, everything doesn't have to have a path or an interpretation sign. Sometimes leave some trees just the way they are. People can enjoy them.
Yeah, it almost provides another one of those spur trails that doesn't have to be interpretive, but I was just wondering how if that was somehow intended to connect there in some way.
So that is this trail that comes off right here that shows as being gravelled, that is the end or the beginning of that trail. So we would, we're proposing to maintain that access off of our main trail that loops around the site.
I have a couple of plant species questions. I noticed that we've got a weeping Alaskan cedar. And I didn't specifically see where that was, but I I guess I'm just curious where that is, why that's chosen over a Western red cedar.
I don't know if you can hear me. Okay, that was selected mostly because of the size and the location of that place. And it is relatively native. Plant, it is on the native list, and I thought in that protected location, it would not become as large as the cedar. It's up for grabs if there's concern about it, but that was the reasoning.
And Where is it?
It's right there.
Right?
Western red cedar. So the only Western red cedar we've got in the plan is the existing one that's very close to the foundation.
Yeah, and I'm not sure it's actually a Western red.
Okay. Do you see any opportunities for?
A Western red? It possibly, although in this location, there is a lot of salt and wind spray. And I am a little concerned about the Western red that close to the water.
Okay. Say, I love the Nooka Rose, the soil, the evergreen huckleberry, and there's lots of them going in. So it feels to me like it's going to be very much more natural like it may have been when the village was there. I'm curious about the boxwood and where they are.
There are some boxwood in the courtyard. I put some non-natives in the courtyard, ones that are adaptive and that had some, that maintain a certain size and that had some ornamental value. It was also in regard to the fact that this was an elementary school and there were probably some non-native plants that were planted, as you'll find them in the community. So it's sort of a mix. We have the native ground covers. I have the beach strawberry, the kinnikinnik in there as well.
So when you say the courtyard, I guess I'm not quite sure where we're talking about.
Well, what's what you're seeing on the screen where
So the southeast plaza.
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah. We'll get the right nomenclature in.
Essentially.
They'll need a little bit of hedging, but the the actual species are ones that don't get enormous. I think in time those particular boxwoods can become four feet high, but they are not particularly fast growing. And I think they're they're relatively easy to maintain.
Joyce, would you mind speaking to what it is that the the boxwood provides for these locations that a native species doesn't?
Well, it is very tight, small evergreen species that makes like an edging. We could maintain the evergreen huckleberry, but that would require more work in terms of pruning and maintaining. So it was a plant material that was selected for its size, its relative ease and maintenance and a very clean, green, small leaved plant to edge. Behind it, we have Mahonia, followed by the Nooka Rose and the kinnikinnik leading in under the whatever we're calling this, the entry, the entry feature. So once you you pass through, everything else is all native. One thing I did want to add, and I'm sorry if I'm changing the subject, but going back to the play area. It was intentional putting it there and intentional that it was a play area within the woods. At one point on the other side, it was we were hoping that the play area would be a wooded play area. And it was something we had to plant. In this case, it's built right in like was suggested. We would do some cleanup and maybe put some bark dust around, just make it a little bit easier for kids to wander in there and remove the blackberries. But there's a lot of native plants in there as well. So once you've learned what is what, you can go through there and basically test your identification that you might have learned where we have them labeled. Any other specific plant material questions? Concerns?
I'm just happy to see the use of shore pines so much. I think that's great.
Those look good.
You know, it's the best tree.
That's so great.
Will grow there other than the Sitka spruce. Actually, along the the coast are existing. They're small, but they were planted by the the children, the schoolchildren. So I think they got listed as new plants. But they, those are existing spruce, the ones towards the top right side.
Seems like the Western red cedar was such an important plant to the native people. That one kind of feels a little bit lost here, but you know, we also said that we want things that actually grow on, grow on the site. So but that's one, one question mark for me is it it seems like that would be an important interpretive plant.
You know, it's something that we could add. It had been in the previous plan. But in in this one, we eliminated eliminated many of the plants that did not grow right on this site. So the number of plants that you're seeing, other than the few non-natives are ones that could be growing here or had been growing here. So the Western red cedar might have been on this site, but more likely it would have been a little more inland. Yeah, stream a bit. We can, you know, it's something that could be planted and and hope that the winds and the salt don't affect it. It may just not be as successful in its growth.
I I think if the tribe has weighed in on the importance of that, then I don't need to make it a point. So.
It is a good point, and I appreciate that because it was very valuable plant.
Well, I'm wondering if, is there anyone on Zoom from the tribe that would like to make any comments?
Several tribal members on. If they would like to make a comment, please raise your hand, I guess. It looks like Ginger's hands up.
Hi, Ginger.
Can you unmute, Ginger?
Sorry. I think Joyce has done a great job planning the landscape. I think it's going to be beautiful and I think it's going to flow well. And I think she's right that cedar probably weren't down this close to the ocean. In the tribe, when they did access cedar for all the different uses they had for it, probably just went further inland.
And Ginger, for purposes of our minutes, could you give your first and last name and mailing address? I know I called on you, but.
Oh, okay. My name is Ginger Erickson. And I live in Happy Valley, Oregon, and my address is 1365, no, I'm sorry, 13625 Southeast Veilmont Lane. And that's spelled with a V as in Victor.
Thank you, and thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Ginger.
Anyone else from the tribe? Like to sway in?
Yeah, D has her hand up. Is there D?
You muted?
No, she's not muted.
D, did you want to say something?
We had audio issues with her the other day. I'm wondering if she's having audio issues.
Did Dick attend to any of the meeting? Okay.
Yeah, he did.
Good, good. Other questions?
I have a question. Can you go over the the Thunderbird area? You talked about the entrance to the garden being maybe a Thunderbird. I didn't get that at all. I didn't understand that at all. Do you know what that's going to be?
We don't know what it's going to be. Excuse me. We know it'll be either a welcome pole or what we're showing here would be two bowls, two poles with a cross member at the top. We were thinking that if that was the case, that it'd be more of like a gateway and that the Thunderbird could be that gate.
Overhead.
Overhead.
So it wouldn't be a closed gate?
No.
Can you say a few more things about how the open air pavilion be utilized? What are the benefits of having that?
There is a few. First and foremost, and this this leads into the ADA discussion for this portion of the site, is that if you have someone with mobility issues who wants to enjoy something that's happening in the story circle that they can eat, they have this platform that they can get to, it's it's comfortable. And they can look down over that venue. The, another purpose is there will be times when people want to play their instruments outside of the rain or connected to electricity. So at times, this open sided pavilion would act as a kind of bandstand. And then the the last, maybe not the last, it'd obviously be used as picnic shelter and some other functions that you would normally associate a carpet area like. But we were thinking it'd also be a good spot for whether it's your, you know, parents or your older brother or sister, whoever's watching you, you're out there playing, you don't care as a toddler, what the weather's doing, you can withstand anything, but those who are just looking after your safety might want some cover. So it's also with that.
So it would be open both towards the story circle and on the opposite side?
Yeah. There's been some discussion, you know, this the architecture of it hasn't been developed beyond its size and orientation. But whether or not the back, you know, if it is being used for a performance and you have people in the story circle looking up at this, do we create it so that that open side facing towards the south and west, maybe it has a temporary closure feature, a panel or a curtain, something that way. But yes, the the intent would be in its permanent nature that the north side and the south side are both open. North side and the south side are both open.
And how about size of that? But it's hard to, hard to make out the scale here.
Yeah, so we, we were currently showing it as a sixteen by thirty-two and we've reduced that to a twelve by twenty-four. We feel like we, we hit a really good size there between budget and functionality. So it can function for all those purposes that we just stated, um, that it would be used for. But also keeping in mind that we need to be constantly thinking about that budget and where we need to fall in the end, so. I get.
That's really thoughtful and well designed. I'd like it too.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Dustin. Thank you very much.
Great job. So then the next step is a public hearing on March twelfth. So, Jan, do you hear that?
Thank you.
March, so, yeah. Okay, ready to move on? Okay, so the next item on our agenda is, um, to review a community committee request. For the Cannon Beach Elementary, and we received a, um, letter and. Looking further on that?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. On February second, twenty twenty four, council received a letter from Paul Duber and Patrick Nofield. Regarding the possibility of development of an ad hoc committee to further discuss the Cannon Beach Elementary School renovation. Letter was received after the packet for the February sixth meeting and was distributed, but I'm sorry. It was distributed but was included under correspondence received after the packet was distributed. Letter is attached to the staff report and the recommendations council to discuss and provide direction. And Paul is here tonight.
Paul, did you want to make any additional comments? As long as you're nice.
Always nice. Paul Duber, P O Box five four nine, Cannon Beach, Oregon. Uh, Mayor Knop, council persons, people, council.
Counselors.
Correct. Initially, let me start with the thank you so much for all the effort you folks have put in on this project so far. Um, my goal here is not to pick apart any piece. Or discuss really any changes or anything like that. The only thing that I would like to discuss. Or bring up is the fact that there seems to be a disconnect between a group of folks. Uh, and the work that you folks have done here. In my conversations with numerous people throughout the community. Uh, including both groups, your group and the group that I'm kind of associated with. There isn't anybody that I've talked to at this particular point that isn't one hundred percent or more behind this, this project. We have everybody that's going in the same direction, but there appears to be a disconnect that apparently happened sometime between. Uh, let's see, we had a, uh, and I think I've addressed this before, on the twenty-seventh of May in twenty twenty-two. We had an amazing gathering in the gymnasium. And our, our group, Pissle and Rose came down, we put up all our instruments and VA systems and we had a. Great time playing a bunch of songs for everybody that was gathered. Um, uh, Dick and Roberta were there. Roberta gave a blessing. Uh, to the, to the group and there were, there were adults, there were kids running all over the place and it was just, it was magic. It was truly a wonderful event. Um, shortly after that, four months later. Uh, we had the first design that came out on fourteenth of September, twenty twenty-two, a schematic design. And it was my understanding that that was approximately eight million dollars is what that would cost to do it that way. Which was basically a development of the project of, of the property so that it was, um. Tsunami, earthquake, et cetera, and the mostly structural events. And again, I don't want to get into the specifics because I'm not an architect and I'm not an accountant. I have absolutely no familiarity with costs involved with doing some of the things that Justin presented. And the things that you folks are considering and have considered. But what I would ask is there is a possibility. That the group concerned citizens, I think is what euphemistically called. Uh, and the city council group to come together and pick it apart and at least have a discussion. To see if we can't arrive at some common ground that takes us from here. To the completion of this project where there is one hundred percent. Common interest and approval and everybody's on the same page. So that's, that's why I'm here. I, I just would like to see some oil poured on the waters. Uh, there, there's been some divisive communication and I apologize for that. Yet there's no place for that here, none. Because everybody's going in the same direction. But I would ask that the city council would, would give us. Give this group an opportunity to sit down with you. Um, Councilor, uh, Hayes mentioned, I think it was at a meeting in January, there were several people that got up and spoke. And Councilor Hayes suggested, well, then you should be a part of the ad hoc committee. And I had, oh, well, that's. That's, that seems to be a move in the right direction. Um, I don't know that there would be ever any changes in this as a result. But I think, and I hate to use the term, it would be politically advantageous. For all of us to sit together and just go about it one last time. And let's see where we can find the common ground and move forward, everybody on the same path. I, I answer any questions that you have, just as long as they're not architectural or financial.
Do you envision this group meeting to also have, to have present at it? An engineer or somebody who could talk about costs because so much of what I've heard. Doesn't involve any hard numbers. It's just speculation. So a meeting like this would, would do no good, I don't think, unless we have somebody present from. The engineering firm or somebody who could say, well, that would cost this or that if we, you know, if we, you know. I, I can't even imagine what the million dollar thing is you're talking about, but it, that would say what, you know, what you would get for a million dollars or. You know, because without that component as part of this, it's just all, you know, wishful thinking. I, I'd like to. Know what's possible and what's not.
I, I am, I am just a messenger from my own perspective. But it's my understanding that the group. If I may, can call them concerned citizens, is that okay with everybody? They already know who I'm talking about. Uh, I would suspect that they would come to that meeting with somebody that had some awareness with regard to those issues. Um, I think they would come prepared, talk about some financial issues. They would come prepared to talk about maybe some architecture issues. I have, I have no sway and I have, I have not put my voice in on who might or might not be part of that group. I cannot address that. The only purpose from my being here is to, is to do what I can. It'd be helping find somebody that can do that, uh, or if somebody has, uh, architectural issues. To try to get tha- that group into a position where there's somebody there that can speak knowledgeably about those situations.
Someone from the group who's doing our engineering here. I mean, the, the group we already have, the, the engineering firm, somebody from there who has done a lot of the cost analysis. In other words.
And, and again, and again, um, Councilor, I, I can't address who would be here because I just don't know.
No, no, I mean, the city would bring their engineer in who has some knowledge. That's what I'm talking about, not, I don't know. Someone from the community who would have that knowledge, but definitely the people who we've hired. Have that information. So if that, if someone from that group was here as part of the meeting, they could answer a lot of questions too.
That would, that would be wonderful, um, because I think that right now it's just a lot of questions. That the concerned citizens had a lot of questions, how we got from here to here. And I, it was my understanding and I apologize because I. When that, when the, uh, September fourteen diagram or schematic came out, I looked at it and I thought, wow, this is, this is awesome. Uh, it dealt with, and it was after the meeting with the, um, the tribe. So all that input from the tribe had already been in there, was part of that process, part of that design. And I had, this is wonderful. This is terrific. And then, then we got to the last one, February twentieth, twenty twenty-three. The current site plan, which is still under, obviously still under, in process. Um, it had changed dramatically. Um, and I, I'm just wondering if there isn't a way that we can get back and talk about some of the pieces that you guys. That you, you folks, you guys, uh, felt were important and appropriate to this process and where we are now. So the only thing that I'm here to do is ask, can we have one more chance at an open discussion? Uh, so that we understand fully what is, what, what is going on, what went into this and the costs that are appropriate to that. To those pieces and give, give that, give concerned citizens an opportunity to evaluate what you folks have arrived at. And potentially get on board. That's my goal.
First, I just want to ask Duncan, Dustin a question. Dustin, when the drawing that Paul is referring to was from the first COE? Or it was the first drawing that you put out?
Actually, what I'm hearing is it was a drawing after. Uh, we had tribal input, the very first COE was more, that, that was more us just saying, here's what's possible. Don't take, take this with a grain of salt because we haven't had any tribal collaboration yet. And from that point forward, we started meeting with the tribe on designs and presenting.
Right.
Designs that had that in.
But at that point, were we putting dollar signs on the projects? Because what I think might have happened is that people were referring to, well, there was a four million dollar project. Well, it was never really a four million dollar project. I had asked ZCS, who was an engineering firm, that did the. Uh, plans for the seismic retrofit and those kind of things. I said, do you have any idea what it might cost to do? A, a community center at that time we were talking. And they said probably four, four and a half million. And then what we found later on that that number was closer to seven or eight. So I was just trying to stop people from saying, well, why don't we just do the four million dollar one? Well, time had passed, a lot of things had, it, it had gone into increasing that cost. So that's where I think that was around eight. I don't know if that design was ever attached to that eight. I was just saying, don't think about four, four and a half anymore. So unless you have something on there that, that we put the price on, and I'm not, I'm not doubting you, Paul, I'm just saying that I'm trying to. Put together how it worked because I don't remember dollar, uh, figures with some of the early designs, early iterations. And somebody apparently has put one on.
Yeah, I have.
Maybe I did to a degree.
I had the exact same question. I'm trying to remember this beautiful plan. That had eight million dollars when, I mean, I've been a part of this process. You know, the public process the entire time, uh, and I do not remember.
I don't either.
What you're describing.
Okay.
I don't either.
I, I do remember that at one point we realized it was between seven and eight million just to complete the two buildings. And that was. Keep them separate.
Point I was going to bring up.
Yeah.
So I mean, do you want us to go back and decide not to connect the two buildings? I mean, is that?
Okay, now, now, okay, uh, you're, you're asking me an architectural question. I will give you what I understand. I don't know, I'm, I'm speaking for the, for myself now. Uh, I personally would not suggest we separate the buildings. I think putting the buildings together. The way this design, and I'm looking at, would that, would it help if I gave you that? Does that make any sense?
Uh, number one, so this, this is before we had any tribal input.
Okay.
But if Council would like, I could pull this up and share it.
I, I would like to see it because I'm totally confused. But I know people have thrown around four million dollars and eight million dollars and escalating prices and as far as. My involvement in this process, we decided what this was going to look like and it's been twelve million dollars. There hasn't been this escalating price except for, it was originally estimated, roughly estimated somewhere at four. Then a number of what it would take to just bring up to code the two buildings without. Combining them, which was more like eight. So it just, it feels like. And there have been people that have added or just tried to push this confusion. And, and I'm just trying to figure out where it's coming from and what we're actually referring to, so. Maybe we can, maybe we can see that.
Well, I think if I may, that the explanation, if we could have that meeting and your explanation of how we got. From the eight billion to the twelve billion, told me and could occur. That it would, it would help tremendously to dissolve some of the. Pretend or opposition to the whole project. And it just seems to me like it might be worth the effort to do that.
It seems to me we've already done that.
Yeah, we've, we've done it over and over again.
Was in January ninth, was that the, that the meeting that we, that, I mean, it's, we've. Well, we've done that many times and we had those huge meetings. It's everybody, all the critics and everybody coming in and talking to us and. We answered them back and in another meeting and we had still more input. We've been going through this for months and months. I don't know if we have more information, if we have new information. Maybe we could have a meeting, but unless we have that, we are a year and a half behind our, in our projects. Which means the cost keeps going up every month and hundreds of thousands of dollars. We need to get on with it. I understand there's critics out there. I'm sorry about that and I'm, and I'm glad to know that. They're supportive of the idea of this school refurbishing. That's good. But I'm not sure we can add any more information than we've already done over the several months. I don't know how my fellow counselors feel about it. I just have some real questions about. What else we could add and how much more time we can spend on the same thing or going over and over and over again. And it has been. Approved, the design has been approved. So we're on that edge of being able to start.
Yeah, we're, we're years into this.
Yeah.
Right, but I.
Approving at every stage of the way. And I, I honestly, Paul, I genuinely believe that you want to bring this community together and. Uh, that you believe that, uh, uh, you know, that everyone's on the same page. I, I think a lot of people see. Uh, delaying this extending the process is a way to derail the project completely. And, uh, you know, as Nancy's saying, it's going to cost more money the longer we delay. I, I, I do think we need a committee to move forward. Uh, I don't think we need a committee to move in reverse.
I, I don't think you're talking about a different kind of committee though. You're talking.
Yes, I am.
And, and I'm, that's not what he's talking about.
I know.
And I, I, I think there, I think that it is worth. Even though I understand that if, if we could do it quickly, if we could do it really in the next few weeks, couple of weeks. I think it's worthwhile to have that meeting, to let people. Again, the ones who didn't come to previous meetings will have the opportunity. And, and to ask questions, to find out. In other words, not to say, well, I, it would, it would be so much cheaper to do A, B, and C, but if there's somebody here who can say, well. Actually, here's how much cheaper it would be. You know, I, I, I just think that the more in, information people have. Even if, you know, we can blame them for not paying attention up until now, but. There, there's nothing to be gained by that. I just don't think it's. I think that if it would cause, if it would create peace and if it would create a, um. A chance for people to, you know, really ask questions of those who know, you know, the experts. Even though it, you know, I, I understand.
Even though we've already done it?
Yes. Even though we've already done it, maybe we can come up with a format that's a little bit better where people could directly ask questions or submit questions. Ahead of time or something and get, and get answers, but just to do it fairly quickly so we don't prolong.
Outcome you see coming out of that.
The outcome I see is that people will feel that they have had a chance to. Ask questions and give their input one last time. That's the only thing I see. I see it as a dialogue.
No, they've already asked the questions and we've already given them.
Not everybody has.
So that's what our last meeting was. The big public meeting where.
I just.
We listen to people and listen to people and listen to people. The big public meeting where we just, we listened to people and listened to people and listened to people all night long. Then we had another meeting. I came back and discussed all those things and tried to clear up some of that, including these prices, you know, people talking about four million, eight million escalating costs. So I just don't know to what end.
Eddie, I see your hand. So I'll get you up in just a second.
I have another one on Zoom too, if you want.
Okay. I think if we were to have a, one last meeting, it would need to be clearly established that we're not going to talk about making it a park or making it a community center, that it, the intent is to create this cultural center and we're, we're going to listen one more time to questions and get answers.
But I think in the past, what has happened is people get up and they speak, but there's no answers right then. Do you know what I mean? The answers were given at the next, the next meeting. I think if we could set it up in such a way that somebody could ask a question and the team or some members of the team could respond.
As long as they're asking questions that we, I, I mean.
Well, not questions about.
Instead of making a speech.
Right, exactly.
I mean, making a statement or making a speech, we have heard those over and over again.
Be with you.
If they, if they have a legitimate question about it that we can actually give the, uh, facts to, give them the answers to. Paul, I had a question. You said you wanted a small representation of this concerned citizens group to form an ad hoc committee. Um, what would that ad hoc committee do?
Essentially, in my mind, what that ad hoc committee would do would allow the city staff and architects, et cetera, to meet with a select group of people from concerned citizens to a, ask those questions, get those answers on the pieces that are inherent within the design, why they cost the way they are, why they got where they are now, and at least provide some answers now. And, and I'm kind of approaching this unfortunately from my side because I thought when we got to the September fourteen design that Justin just looked at, I thought that was it. I didn't realize that there was going to be more discussion with regard, with regarding more additions of pieces, et cetera. Uh, so the, 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 the next design, the, the one that was approved here last month, did come as a bit of a surprise to me because I had not seen that before. Now, that's my fault. Okay, I cannot blame anybody here on the council for that. I stopped paying attention when I saw the design from the, from, from September fourteen. I thought that was a wonderful design and I was, let's go, let's get her done. But I think it would help. And I, I, I can't say that the concerned citizen is going to go away or anything like that. All I'm saying is if there's a possibility, we can get to a point where that, where conservative citizens is now cohesively a part of the city council and the project and the goals, the dream, the legacy, whatever you want to call it, that it would be worth a couple of meetings where staff can sit down with a select group. And I'm not talking about a group that comes in and starts yammering and speaking and speeching, uh, because that's not the goal. The goal is just to understand better why we're here and the processes and the decisions that made this the final design.
And that ad hoc committee then would go out and do what?
I'm sorry.
And what would that, what would the ad hoc committee do with that information?
Well, hopefully they would understand the processes and the, the, the costs, et cetera, et cetera. And say, oh, okay, I, I get that now. Uh, and, and sign on to the program.
Well, that's like a big committee.
Yeah, an ad hoc committee. That, that doesn't appeal to me at all. I'd rather it was just an open meeting because we were going to have a bunch of people who weren't included in the ad hoc committee and don't agree with the ad hoc committee's take on things. And you're still going to have all this divisiveness. I think it's either got to be an open meeting or nothing.
Yeah, the opposition is.
Lot who.
They are, they oppose this project for ten widely different reasons.
Right.
Some of them don't want it to happen at all. As much as you think everyone wants this to happen, some just do not like city or do not like city staff. Uh, and, uh, others have legitimate concerns about the cost. I mean, we're all concerned about the cost. Uh, and it seems so reasonable to say, well, we should just reduce the scope. But we've also looked at that.
Very.
I just want to come back to the meetings. We've had the meeting with everybody and all those concerned citizens made their comments. We sat here and wrote pages and pages of notes. And then we came back a couple of weeks later and addressed each and every one of those concerns. The cost, you know, we did scale back the landscape plan, which we're looking at tonight. So I just, I ju, I can't say that we're going to ignore the public process that we've been through for years to, to delay again. That's.
I think that one, if we did have a meeting, one of the things that have to be clear is we're not going to discuss things that are absolutely been taken off the table. For example, we can't use TLT money for housing. So we're not going to put housing on that side. We can't put housing there anyway. And so those kinds of things are not even part of the discussion because we've already, you know, if, if this is legitimate concern, like real legitimate things that, that we could discuss, I'm, I'm willing to listen to anybody.
I would like a citizen committee to help us move forward. That's what I would like to see.
And.
Not a citizen.
You mean by that exactly?
To, uh, to push this back farther.
When you say move forward, what, what do you envision the committee would be doing in terms of moving it forward? Because you've had your, the management committee, which we, and the operations committee, which is good, was a good committee. So how, where do we go in terms of moving forward, especially if you're talking about the design of the building?
I, I would like to see. Design is not part of it. You know, design, we've looked at, approved, considered carefully.
So if it's not designer use, what is it?
But we had talked about a nonprofit operating this, and this is going to Jan's question. You know, in looking, uh, in conversation with the city's bond council, this is an attorney who handles bonding municipal bonds. Uh, there are IRS rules to avoid a third party from benefiting, uh, from a municipal project that's getting, uh, this tax-free bond, tax-free municipal bond. Uh, so I don't know if that, if that explains why we're there, but that kind of takes our nonprofit or, and at least pushes it down the road until we could work out a management agreement that satisfies IRS rules. Uh, but what is missing from that process is community involvement. And that's where I agree with this totally, that community involvement in moving forward and, uh, and overseeing, you know, advising in the operations of it and I see that as valuable.
Okay.
Community input. And I think the community has felt disconnected from this.
Some members have.
Some have, right. Concerned citizens.
When you say, I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm putting my reporter's hat on almost. When you say you want to move forward and you're talking about operations, you've already done that, your committee's already done that. So what more, I mean, I, I realize there's more work that needs to be done. I just want you to kind of be a little more specific on what kind of work you see that needs to be.
All that, all of that, someone needs to take those recommendations and, uh, and make them realities. You know, take the broad recommendations and come up with policies about the use.
Okay.
Of the facility and provide some kind of community involvement. Uh, you know, community interaction with a director of this facility. So that, you know, the community can be involved in pushing it forward in the direction that they're concerned about.
Are you talking like a parks board for the, for the NACUS? In other words.
An advisory.
An advisory committee?
Advisory committee, so farmer's market.
Right.
More like.
Right.
Right.
Uh, but that way.
That's out in the future, though, once, you know, because we don't even have a department set up yet to, to.
Yeah, it's a city.
Well, that's way off.
Where the city, the city has to interlace with the advisory committee. We haven't even gotten to the.
Right.
Portion of it yet to get to the advisory. I mean, there was the Haystack, the Haystack awareness program long before there was a Friends of Haystack.
Right.
So that's where, you know, we, we've, we're in that, but that's not what Paul's talking about.
No.
I think, I think we're.
I know.
I think that's beyond what Paul is talking about.
I, it's, the only similarity is we're both talking about community input.
Right.
What, yeah, but they're talking about.
Think your group of concerned citizens would be willing to have one meeting with questions asked before the meeting? So that we.
Submitted.
Submitted, so that we could have our, our commit, our experts weigh in on those questions. And it's a public, it has to be a public meeting and it would be one last.
Yeah.
Submitted opportunity.
Yeah, that's, and have the engineers and architects answer and financial people answer those questions.
And then we give the answers in the public meeting.
I, I think I, I would certainly tell you I would be most appreciative if, if all we had was one meeting and we, and we could ask questions and get answers. I think that would be helpful. I can't speak for that group. I can only speak for myself.
But if they could ask them ahead of time, it would make it not last till midnight, number one. And number two, it would, we could get all the information assembled ahead of time, which would be great.
And, and we can't wait.
Yeah, it would have to happen soon.
No, we can't wait too long. We have to get this thing going.
Yeah.
It's.
It's costing us way too much to wait any longer than we're already doing.
It's my understanding that they are planning to have a meeting this Friday, and I would be most tickled to.
Who's?
Let them know.
Oh, your concerns.
Citizens.
And what do they want?
Information.
They really not understand.
I don't.
Funding, costs.
I don't. And then, and that's just me. But, uh, uh, there is, there is a serious concern on their part with regard to the total, the, the twelve million dollars and how it got to that point. And while I appreciate you folks have gone through this and parsed it and put it back together and you have a plan and this is what we're talking about. I think from my perspective, just knowing what the pieces were that went into that. And my apology again, because I wasn't here for some of that stuff. I was unaware that it was still going on or evolving. Uh, and I, I have no idea what they would say. All I can do is take your response to my letter back to them and say, okay, this is, this is what city council will be willing to do. Prepare, open the, the group prepare a list of questions within the parameters that you suggest. Um, I, there's definitely no room for discussion with regard to affordable housing. And that's, that's a non-issue for this. This is strictly questions involving the architectural and the financial issues with regard to the project, the plan that's currently on that you guys, you folks have currently approved. That's it.
I'm gonna ask Betty to make a comment because her hand's been up for a long time and then we'll do Bruce. So.
So I just.
That doesn't mean you're finished, Paul.
Watching this process happen, what I saw was a, a gym, which is for the community, a classroom, which is for our educational program, and this beautiful center that connects them both, which is the, what the tribal influence is. And when we talk about scaling back, and you've mentioned many times about just doing away with that middle part, you're really talking to the tribe and you're saying, let's just do away with that. I don't think that's okay. I've been part of this process and I think this process has been fair and I think it's amazing what they've created. And the tribe gave up a lot when they gave up their, their Thunderbird Garden. They gave it up with humility. They didn't fight it. And so I think we should just move on. And if people are concerned, okay, let's have another meeting, but let them understand the tribal part is the middle part and it keeps the whole thing together.
We, we all understand that.
Okay, I just don't think.
Well, some people don't understand, so let's explain it.
Yeah, sorry.
Let's explain it again.
Yeah.
Yeah, don't. Yeah.
Anyway.
Anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Betty.
I, it feels like we've explained that.
We definitely haven't. We haven't done a good job of it. So let's try one more time. Bruce.
Don't feel like we haven't done a good job explaining. I just think that clearly there are people that through either their own admission that they didn't pay attention or misunderstanding.
Or they.
I'm not, I just want to express my opinion because I haven't said anything up to this point. I agree with Nancy. I agree with Hugh Carey that we have discussed all this. It's cleared my mind, but I am willing to, to have a meeting and do exactly what we've just discussed.
I mean, the pricing is pretty clear and I don't know how we can be much more clear about it. Somewhere in the neighborhood of eight million dollars to do that, uh, what you had up there and just bring up to code the two buildings. I have my concerns about that as Betty does, is twelve million dollars to add the part and make it one facility. So I think we're going to have people who say we shouldn't put, we shouldn't do that middle part and that will be the.
Yeah. And we'll, and we'll, and we've already as a council have agreed that we love that connection feature. So that's, you know, explain it. Show the, remember we had that chart on the, the engineers put, or the builders put a contractor.
Bring that up again.
That told how much everything costs. Do it again.
Yeah, that was at that meeting. Yeah.
Well, so show it again. I know, I know that we've, we've talked about all these things before, but I just would love to see this, you know, make, we've, and that'll be, we're making a huge effort to try and once again include everybody's opinion. We'll hear and we'll see. And, and maybe there'll be a better understanding.
Bruce. I'm just trying to talk about what's possible. If, um, we get questions or suggestions in advance and we have a little bit of time, we can go ahead and price those out. Um, it, it's almost impossible to have somebody say, well.
On the spot.
You know, change the roof or put a whole different roof on it or something and be able to say it'd be this many dollars. Because you got to say, okay, well, if you take that away, now you got to put something else on it. So what's the cost of that? And then what's the difference is really where you're at.
Okay, so ahead of time.
So if we can get the, the, the um, the asks or the recommendation ahead of time, we can do that and we can.
Questions.
Yeah, the questions, the questions. It, it's like, it's like we had that one statement that, oh, moving the kitchen would save us so much money. Well, would it? I, you know, but that, but that's the question we need to answer. So if we had that question ahead of time, then the engineers and architects would say no or yes. Moving the kitchen would save us a million dollars or it wouldn't, and here's why.
Just, see, I see that as a suggestion, not necessarily just a question. I, I guess we can try to answer the questions, but I, I can't in my mind think of a question that wouldn't have something to do with the dollars. So if, um, but if we can do that and if we can, um, we'll, we'll answer the best that we can, but the ones that are the dollars would make, be the most, make the most sense. And, um, if you decide to move forward, that's something we can do if we get the questions in advance.
And aesthetically, we've already, as a council anyway, have said that we like that design. We've approved it, said we like it, we like the buildings connected. But that doesn't mean that, you know, and we can explain why if necessary, because, because it's, you know, there's many reasons for it. And, and we've said them all before, but we can say them again.
Something we can do without delaying the project. That's the big question because uh, I remember the term a hundred thousand dollars a month.
And it's more.
So people are complaining about the money. And if we start spending more money to keep going in this endless cycle of questions and misinformation out there, uh, all it's doing is costing us more money and making the project less likely that we can actually afford it.
Yep.
Let me, one more comment?
I said you aren't finished.
I, I, just to address Gary, um, there seems to be a feeling on your part that there is a larger group of people who are not in favor of this project. Uh, I would differ with that. I would very strongly differ with that. I think the majority of, and we've had this conversation within that group, who's in favor of this? And I think there was one hand that went up, but a person who said, well, I just as soon see it as a park. That was one person out of about sixteen. Everybody else had raised their hand that they were in favor or votes suggested they were in favor of this project. That it was something that was important to them, that they were one hundred and ten percent behind the thought, the processing and, and the goal, they were questioning the cost.
And they're questioning whether it's going to be one facility.
Well, they don't necessarily understand.
You know, to be honest, Gary, that everybody that I have talked, everybody that I have talked to specifically about this has, has told me that you're talking about the connection between the gymnasium and the group. Everybody that I have spoken personally to is in favor of that. Okay? So I, and that, that's, I'm not speaking for that entire group now. I'm just speaking for probably uh, eight to nine of those people that I had had a conversation with that said, yeah, we, we, that's right, that has to be there.
Well, then what is it that they, we could possibly reduce in cost?
Let them ask the questions. Let them, let them.
I, I can't, I can't do that.
That's why we need, if we have this meeting, we need to have those specifics. We can't just hear, we've been hearing time after time after time, reduce the scope, reduce the scope. But nobody has come in and said, other than somebody coming in and saying, tear the whole thing down and build a longhouse. Um, we haven't heard specifically and how much that would, they think it would save in the construction of it. If, if, like Gary says, our impression has been that they want two separate buildings and not the connections. And I, I don't even know how much I, that would reduce the cost of, of, of a project right now. But we want specifics and we want an S, you know, estimated cost of how much that would reduce the construction cost. Or else, you know, we don't really have much more that we can, yeah, say.
That's why we need questions ahead of time that we can answer. That, it's not because we're trying to limit people's free speech. It's because the only way we can answer them effectively is to have them ahead of time. Because it's, they're, they're numbers questions mostly, financial questions and their engineering type questions and architectural questions.
I, I think the path that you're suggesting now is that this group present the council uh, questions that are important to the group with regard to scope or location or whether we connect the buildings, um, be presented to you that they be specific and only deal with this project and not purple housing or anything like that. That, that I, I, I'd be tickled to go back to the group and say, hey, city council has agreed that, that a select group of citizens, concerned citizens meet with staff and Bruce, whomever you choose and talk about those things.
Would be in
It would have to be a public meeting.
It has to be. Yeah.
All right, I, I'm.
We have to come too.
Yeah.
Okay. Right.
And, and, and soon, sooner rather than later. That's what's really
Yeah, we have to have it very soon.
I would suspect that probably within the week or two, we could make that happen.
Okay.
We already have three meetings next week scheduled, so I don't know. I also have to make sure that we're giving our, and given notice.
Have public notice.
Well, and giving, give our.
Yeah, you have to answer the questions.
If we can give people a week to get the suggestions or whatever we want to call it. And then give Remick and Ceta ten days, um, to put together the answers and then we can go ahead and put out a report. And that'll be around two weeks before the report's done. Now that's, then we have to schedule a meeting.
Okay. Well, can we schedule the meeting while the report's being done? In other words.
Are you gonna do it in advance?
Yeah.
Fine with that.
Schedule the meeting in advance so that we have it on the calendar because we have to give notice, et cetera. So we don't want to hold that process up.
And another thing, we're at the end of the, uh, design development drawings. And I wouldn't, uh, want to stop that or slow that down.
No.
No, it's gonna slow it down some, but, you know, to just try to work around that time.
Um, Bruce, how is it gonna slow it down?
You're taking, uh, Dustin and, uh, the, the Remick people away doing the estimating. It's at the end of the series.
Thank you for making that.
And how much more?
Very much appreciate.
How much more will their services cost to do this?
I don't know. And that's, that's something
Going to add cost to it.
It'll, it'll, yeah, the, the time that they're working on this, we will pay for.
And that's one thing the group needs to realize is your concerned citizens is that if we go through this process, it's gonna cost us more money.
Cause the time for the engineers and the estimators and all those people to go over that. So that's raising the cost of this project.
I can say, I think if we, if you all are willing to move forward with this, that the amount that is going to increase the cost will be relatively insignificant.
Okay.
To, when, when you look at the whole project's cost. So if it's worth doing, let's do it. There would be a cost. It won't be
Yeah.
absorbent.
I think it's worth doing just to say that we've done everything possible. That, that's important to me to know that I've given everybody the chance to, you know. I, I just think it's
But now your timeline is more than two weeks. About two and a half weeks.
Yeah, two and a half.
So.
So eat for the questions.
Fifteen days, what I was looking at.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ten days and the five. I guess there's a weekend in there somewhere.
Okay. Dustin, did you refine that schematic?
I do. I have that pulled up right now. And if I could clarify, uh, Paul, for you and for a council. So this was the first time that we were allowed to put, that we allowed ourselves to put pen to paper. And the purpose of this community outreach event, it was, we called that one COE number four.
And what was the date of that meeting?
This was September sixteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Some of us weren't at this table. It was just Brandon and me at that time. Yeah.
So a couple of things I
You're in the audience.
That's right. A couple of things I want to just reiterate here and it was, it was talked about multiple times in the COE. This is Ceta's design, a very preliminary design and intended to engage public interest. At this point in time, there had been no design shirets with the tribe. We, of course, we've been in communication with the tribe. They were present throughout the entire programming, uh, community outreach process.
Door price sign to any of us.
Well, I'm sorry.
Door construction costs or.
Uh, but the point I do want to bring up for Paul is that no, there's no connection in between these buildings, but what we were proposing with this was to create that same space over here at the northwest corner. So this is a teardown of the existing lean-to and a creation of the heritage. At this point, it wasn't a heritage lobby. Uh, this was going back to one of Mayor Sam's, uh, discussions about how this place could be envisioned as uh, this place being this addition, a threshold, uh, to connection piece that connected up to the trail. Um, and that also being a cultural heritage piece. That's kind of where this concept came from. But by the next meeting, uh, community outreach meeting, it, it was determined both through tribal preference and also meeting with that council at that time, that the preferred location for this function was in between the two existing buildings.
I remembered that.
Yeah.
When was that?
Uh, this was September, the following one. I've got that pulled up actually. Uh, would be COE five. That would have been November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
You were duly elected.
And then it was the next community outreach event, COE number six. February twenty-first, almost exactly one year ago. Uh, where Remick had been brought on board as the CMGC and offered that first glimpse. So a high level schematic estimate, and that's the estimate, that is the twelve point three.
And Mayor, we have another tribe member that has their hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hi, Todd. Unmute yourself.
Are you giving up?
Are you still there, Todd?
I am.
There he is.
I am. Sorry about that. First off, I've never met Paul, but Paul, thanks a lot. Um, speaking from the tribe. Uh, we really appreciate, um, trying to bring the community together. This has been a hard, uh, process for everybody. And lots of things have been said that probably weren't fully intended, sort of like the comments on a YouTube video. You know, it gets, it gets out of hand too easily. So we really appreciate this and, um, I'm not speaking out of turn. I think to say whatever the tribe will do to help inform people, we're on board, um, a hundred percent. It's been a long process and I know not everyone has weeknights at six o'clock available. So, um, one thing I wanted to, this is a personal thought is uh, I really appreciate people defending the lobby space. And yes, it would be predominantly themed, uh, native, uh, but we've always thought and, um, that it was, it's truly a shared space that, um, yeah, there might be canoe hanging from the ceiling or whatever ends up, but it really is hopefully the heart of a great space that is, um, shared by everybody. It's not us. It's not a, a walled off little museum quality. We want people in there doing their, you know, waiting for people from the gym or overflow. It's not a museum space for the tribe. It's an active living space where we get to tell our story, sure, but so does everybody else. I think that's really important. And then just finally, as far as information, I would think that maybe the application of the, of the latest budget that's up to date and hand it out and publish some way or another. As, and again, you get a fantastic on those things because it's, uh, as Dustin will probably agree, it's in process, right? And things change and they're doing their best. I'm really bitter that they're, uh, trying to be transparent, but, you know, publish it. And I think the people who are sort of against it will look at it and go, wow, stuff's just expensive. And there's not like a diamond covered anything in this thing stripped down. Civic going in. Again, um, thanks for the
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you, Todd.
Questions for Justin, if I may. Uh, on that, um, the, um, September fourteen, the one that you and I just spoke about on page, uh, it says SD ten. It looks like there is, uh, that particular option one. Uh, apparently shows that coverage, but then the connection of the two buildings. Am I accurate?
Yes, this was early enough in the design process that we were presenting multiple options with the goal of towards the end of schematic design, we will pare it down to a single option through community outreach and council.
Uh, and I, and I did see that and I, I was very much in favor of that connection, uh, personally. But again, um, my comment to all of you folks is give us another shot for understanding where we are and why we're here. Please.
We'll call it the final shot. Heard around the world. At least in Canopie.
Yes.
Please. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay, so in terms of dates, um, do you want to set anything? I mean, Paul had said his group was gonna meet on Friday. So does that, is that when the clock starts in terms of
Yeah.
The meetings?
Well, it starts today. Okay. Um, can you get us comments, you think, on Monday?
Oh, after their Friday meeting?
I'm sorry, Bruce, can I?
Your Friday meeting, do you think that somebody could make a list of the comments or whatever and get it to us on Monday?
I can give it a shot.
Right, because then, then that'll start what our ten day is. And, um, we'll set a meeting sometime within a three or four days of that. Is that okay?
Uh huh.
At the end of the ten days?
Well, there will be an email going out from me tonight to the group. And with your parameters that you're willing to work with, with regard to this, uh, meeting. And I will pass, if you can give that information to me, um, I will do everything that I can to make sure it's out there immediately.
Kind of information do you want, Paul?
I'm sorry?
What kind of information do you want?
I think the dates.
I'm sorry?
The, the dates, the deadlines, the one.
Uh, yes, that, that, that would be helpful, but essentially what I'm going to tell them is that, is that hopefully the city council has agreed to have one meeting, um, and with a specific purpose of explaining why we got from here to here. And allow a presentation of questions with regard to cost or changes or whatever that your, that the staff can address and provide us with specific answers to those questions. And that would be the guideline for the meeting.
But you need to make sure that you tell them that we want the questions in advance.
Yes.
And we need them by Monday.
Yeah, okay.
By next week.
I will be more than happy to give them that information.
Twenty-six.
Say again?
Twenty-sixth.
Yeah. February twenty-sixth.
Yes.
Okay, twenty-six, Monday, the twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we want specific questions, uh, not, not to reduce the scope. But what do they mean by reducing scope? You know, is it moving the restroom? Is it moving the kitchen? Is it getting rid of the heritage part? What is it that they, what questions do they have?
Okay.
Specifically.
Okay, all right. I can present that to them and then it's, then it's in their court. They have to come up, uh, by Monday with that set of questions for you folks.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
And ten days, ten days after that, we will have information ready and a report.
And then you guys, you folks would set a meeting date, time, et cetera. And we, I'm sure there will be a group, uh, people will be there.
Good.
Okay.
Okay.
Great, here we go again.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you guys. And the city staff for
Yeah.
The extra work.
Sure.
Okay. So we're at, is it a de-order? Anybody want to repeat anything? Coffee with the counselors on Monday at ten o'clock here or Zoom or YouTube.
Yeah. And, uh, I have something for good of the order and that's the, um, information, the letter we got from Larry Sellers about the trees that were, um, cut in half, basically their whole system.
Did you get the email from Jen?
No.
Sent today. Um, the, the legal staff is working on it and, and Ashley is not in until, back until
Okay, so we're not gonna get an answer. So when she comes back, the legal staff We did?
Oh, I didn't read it. Uh, that's what I meant is, did she read it? So, no, so that they're, they're working on it.
Okay.
Ashley is out of the office until tomorrow.
Okay, so when, when will we have some answers to this? I'm, I'm just afraid of it falling by the wayside, you know.
I don't think it's going to. We're, we're, we're working on it.
Mm-hmm. Cause I'm pretty upset about it. You know, I'm very concerned about it. I really
We're not gonna forget it though.
Yeah, and I physically watched it happen. So.
Okay.
Okay.
So stay tuned. Anything else for good to the order?
Uh, yeah, can I just get updated on when our, I've got an executive session coming up?
Right, so next week we have coffee with the counselors at ten on Monday, Tuesday at, um, five o'clock, we have a executive session. Meeting. Uh, Wednesday at six o'clock, we have a council meeting on, um, the police department. And then Thursday, February twenty-ninth. Luckily, there's an extra day in February, so we can have a meeting.
Could use it.
Yeah, that's how we're gonna have the code on it.
Thank you.
A leap, a leap year special.
And
Start a time on that.
At six. Yeah, so Tuesday is five, Wednesday, Thursday at six.
Tuesday, we also have a six o'clock meeting as well, right?
No, it's my understanding, it's just No, it's my understanding, it's just
Just executive hour.
Two hour executive. But it's an executive session.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so five, so ten, five, that's, that's the numbers to remember. Okay, anything else? Brandon?
Yes, so on the city's website, got a meeting listed as February twenty-eighth and February twenty-ninth.
Nothing on twenty-seventh, executive session?
No.
That's because I think it's that executive session, but they should probably say negative session.
Yeah.
I'll put it on there.
Okay.
There is an exec session. I have Jen's notes and it's right here.
It just hasn't been noticed yet, right? That's why it's not there.
I think she's gonna notice it tomorrow. She's out sick.
Okay, and it's at five o'clock? Okay.
All right.
And then is, is there, could you check, isn't there planning commission meeting, uh, the wetlands ordinance?
It's on
That's the twenty-ninth.
No, the twenty, no, the planning commission meeting on the wetlands is the twenty-second, this Thursday.
That is, that is
This Thursday. So we've got design review tomorrow night and planning commission.
Yep.
Thursday. And I don't know what you're gonna do on Friday, but
Sleep.
Okay, anything else? Now that we've got our schedules all arranged. Okay, meeting's adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.